All right, we'll start with roll call please.
Mayor Loughlin.
Here.
Councilperson Sexton.
Here.
Here.
Stillman.
Yeah.
All right, thanks everyone for coming. We'll start with the I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor say aye. We will start with the consent agenda. If anybody needs an agenda, there's a handout there. The consent agenda consists of the approval of the April seventh special city council meeting. On the April seventh regular city council meeting. Special event from it from summer kickoff twenty twenty five sponsored by Main Street West Branch. That's for June thirteenth and fourteenth. An approval is special event for mint for for mint for summer kickoff road race. Sponsored by the West Branch Girls Track and Field on June fourteenth. And the claims for the April twenty first motion please. Okay, any comments, questions? So little Bayon's gonna be here on Saturday night. Anybody anything else? Otherwise we'll go ahead and listen.
Councilperson Bing.
Yes.
Forham.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Stillman.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Okay. Open communication with you. If you're here to say state to the council, you can like to come to the podium and state your name, please, and we'd like to hear what you have to say. I'm gonna limit you to three minutes and try not to overlap comments and repeat each other. So if anybody wants to address the council. Now's your time.
We're gonna.
Come up to the podium.
Are we gonna do something with the grant or what's are we on?
On that page there again, or we already been gonna talk about it?
I think we're getting closer every day.
Oh yeah, well, like I said, after thirty years of starting it, I don't know how close we can get, so.
Yeah.
FEMA may be out of out of business here pretty soon, so that's part of the problem.
Only hoping.
That might help.
Been paying FEMA for years.
Who's gonna tell them can't do it?
Then what? There's this little deal of Bruce about taking the trees off or pulling them off of the properties. Are we still considering that?
I don't know where you're asking to get them off of your properties.
Well, I did and I talked to Dave about it to the engineer and then he Bruce called me this morning. He was looking at, he was on the railroad there looking at it and talked, so I didn't know if he was put up, you know, proposal up to take them all and clear them and put them over in the other pile or.
I don't know where we're at on that. I think if you really want to get off, we should try to get them off.
I want them off my.
You'll allow Dave can kind of explain.
Okay. I want them off mine. I can't use it for anything like that, but like I said, the biggest part is because of the way that the berm is anyway, and then you added the trees on berm.
Yeah.
And then added them down into that waterway way and then.
Let Dave explain. He may know more than than I do actually.
Hey, again.
So.
I'll sit down and listen to you.
All right. So as I talked about at the last meeting, we've been going through this for quite a while. He's been pretty patient and he has expressed prior to that last meeting that he wanted to get those off his property. So we did reach out to Bruce and Bruce gave us a price and afforded that to Adam. I think that that's probably within your threshold to approve. Is that correct? It was eighteen hundred dollars. To get those moved off his property and put over on the pile that's over on the city property on the other side.
Do we need a resolution? Do we need a resolution to do that?
It's under, so we're planning to move forward to that, but I just got that price today and afforded it to Adam. So that's in the process of getting done. If you know Bruce was out there this morning.
Yeah, he was out this morning.
So.
So is that, that'll be there. Were you talking about taking even the ones that are on the park side itself that's along the bank? Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so we're looking on either side of the creek, moving those over and putting them on that big pile.
Okay.
Get them out of the way so it opens it up as you asked me to do. So that's that's where we're at with it. While I'm talking about it, we got some additional comments from FEMA this morning and we request another review meeting with them because some of the comments are redundant and ridiculous. So we're we're trying to get past those and hopefully later this week we can get that set up and.
Dave's working working his tail off with FEMA, so we we gotta follow the rules.
Their rules.
Their rules.
Yeah, their rules.
Not our rules. Thank you FEMA Dave.
That answer your question.
All right, anybody else? Communications open for him. I know there's somebody.
Unless we're gonna move on.
I thought that maybe this was a meeting about the rezoning of the east side of West Branch.
Actually, it's not on our agenda, but you're welcome to talk about it. It's what we're here for.
What is that gonna look like? What are where's the area of it? What is that when it's gonna come into effect?
Okay, it's not actually a rezoning. It's a designation into urban, it's an urban renewal. Designation here, yes. Which opens outside of town of town up for opportunities.
And lower housing cost. So in other words, you're a house. When you go to sell it, your property may go down. But we're gonna be taxed.
Do you have any proof that that's gonna happen?
I don't. I don't know that.
You're after any time. I mean.
Yeah, yeah, that it's not gonna happen.
That's not uncommon for it to happen. I don't know that'll happen here, but I don't know that you can guarantee that. That's one of the side effects of these, whatever you call it, urban renewal and renewals. Some people call them some things. That is a risk as far as I'm concerned. The property values could go down.
I mean, Mike, half this town's built in urban renewal.
That's why we should make everything an urban renewal much east side, not Main Street, Downey Street, all those houses. Greenview is over the moon.
Well, we. Every street in town. This part done.
But why include the new part up there? It's not even.
It's a tool. It's a tool to use.
For people to get money for people that wanna build. What's the special meeting about tonight?
May never happen. It may never happen.
Well, hopefully it doesn't.
So what you're saying is it's not on the agenda. We'll ever be on the agenda to come and talk about it.
Tomorrow night is on the agenda at the planning and zoning meeting tomorrow night.
Same place?
Yep.
Okay.
Same time.
All right. Appreciate that.
I'll be there tomorrow night also in the audience. So anybody else?
Well.
Go ahead. Can you say your name?
I'm Candy Tuttle. I live on Fifth and Water Street. This is my daughter, Macy. And we're a bit concerned about the terminology used for, and I understand the government works in different ways that you have to use certain terminology to get things that you that you need to be done. However, she made a very good point that if we are in a so-called slump area or blight area, it would potentially lower taxes for our properties. But in during that urban renewal, my concern is is who's going to if if I'm not wording this quite right. If the government isn't gonna come in or step in and give grants. And we and the zoning says, hey, we need to do this. Are we being taxed for that? And our 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 property values are going down because of the terminology and the zoning and all that stuff. That's my biggest concern.
I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay.
It's not zoning. It's designated.
Designated. So zoning is not a word that should be used.
No, no, no rezoning.
You're still be zoned residential like you are today.
I mean, if developer could come in and if he wants to buy your property and rezone it. But that's that's up to you.
Okay, so the meeting tomorrow night, and I probably will be here tomorrow night as well, just so I'm more informed because that part of town absolutely represents my house, my neighbors, my friends. So I just wanted to make clear what exactly the proper terminology for that and the the process forward. So basically, this whole thing could be nothing or something. To to be honest.
We were trying to set ourselves up for the future. I mean, long-term future that to for long-term growth. To use these as tools. The urban renewal area as a tool to support growth.
The earliest final, the earliest of final though would happen would be in June or July. It'd be July. What's the first meeting in July? There has to be three weeks.
No, for the designation, it's only, or it so would be the first meeting in June, right?
Second meeting in June.
Yeah.
So that would be.
Twenty third or something.
There'll be a there'll be a public hearing at this meeting before they would take any action on.
Any action on anything.
But that's still through planning zoning first, so that's why they're having that first meeting. But they it has to come back through here and have a public hearing on the designation.
Right now, we're just giving comments, but if it becomes an official vote or notice, by law, we have to send you letters and notify.
Okay, so we will be notified by letter. We don't have to stop here and read anything or we have to be notified. That's that's great. My my next thing is just in the future, because I am a resident of that area. The wording and terminology would have been nice if you said, hey, folks, don't be offended by this, but this is what we have to this is how we have to word it in order to get what we need to have from the government. So with that being said, a little bit more respectful of the residents of that specific area, if that's the intention. So.
It's an unfortunate terminology.
Yeah, it is, and I I understand that, but it also needs to be addressed that it is. It's not a slump. It's not a white area. We do need work down there. Sidewalks need done. Uh drainage needs done. There's stuff that needs to be done, and I realize that the city can't take care of all of it, and I understand that, but it's the terminology is is not okay. Sorry. Thank you.
Anyone else before we move on?
I think one.
Go ahead, Jerry.
So by naming the east side the slum or blight, whatever, it is a kick in the gut. I ain't gonna lie. But it's gonna benefit who? The people who live there are the developers. I mean, how's it gonna benefit me, Tom?
Say you want new windows and apply for a grant and the grant pays for your windows.
They can do that without calling it that, maybe, without does it maybe ask you?
And unfortunately.
Power.
May strengthen the.
Unfortunately, already by getting called the slum and blight, there's been names, there's been people from one side of town already bashing the east side. And I have proof that they're doing what's good. And that started already, and that's unfortunate because it's adults. And it's adult people.
People they should know about.
Said.
Well, and here's the here's the kicker to that, guys, is most of the other side of town is in the same program. It's just called differently because it was set up before homes were put on the piece of property. So the same urban renewal district that we're setting up for you guys is the exact same urban renewal district that they're in.
And I agree with her, and I told Adam the other day, the thing that really hurts me is we're called the slums. I mean, I grew up on the east side, along with some of these people. I worked hard for the guy. And now it's not urban renewal, Colton. It's called the slum. People in our city have asked, why are what's the slump? You know, they hear that word. What's the first thing you think of? It's 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 unfortunate. It's labeled that way. It, you know, and that's that's gonna create a problem.
All right. Just playing the devil's advocate. It was never put on Facebook. Nobody reads this. You know, it it was the argument that got started on Facebook.
But if it wasn't, it would have slid underneath everybody. Nobody would have known it. And that's not right either.
That it would have slid under the door.
Yeah. Yeah, and we hadn't seen it on Facebook. Nobody would have known about it.
Well. What I'm saying is it's the terminology and the the fight that ensued over the terminology was actually started started by by you folks.
Well, the thing that bothers me too, not even just terminology, is there's a chance property values go down. Nobody can prove it won't. Nobody can prove it will, but there's a good chance.
So all of that, the nineteen million dollars worth of worth of investment that's gonna happen at the Kroll site is done on slum and slum and blight side. So why would it? Why would a developer come and put nineteen million dollars into a slum and blight site if his property values were gonna go down?
You can't do it and name the whole east side of town slum and blight to do one section.
And Colton, back again, that helps the developer. It'll help the people who've been in it a lot.
Here's where. Wait, wait, it benefits the whole community. As this community grows, taxes go, we get more taxes. It pays for more stuff in our town. Our tax base has already gone down because of our growth. This community wants a lot of amenities that we can't afford without growth. We want swimming pools. We want parks. We want sidewalks. We want trails. None of that can happen until we grow. This town does not have that kind of money. As we grow, we will get that kind of money.
And if you drive around until to, I'm not gonna name any towns. But I mean, if you drive around in Cedar County to all the rural towns, the ones that aren't growing, don't look like our towns. They're they're not they're not having the things that we're having. They're not they're not putting in new streets. They're not they're not doing those things because they don't have the growth. And if you're not tiffin, you're not growing. You're not doing those things because your taxes doesn't pay to do those things. Your taxes pay to maintain. So if if we can't grow and have fifth districts and and utilize that money, then all we're ever gonna do is maintain, and we probably won't even do that. We'll go backwards. That's what's that's why the city has gotten into the place that it's at was because for so long we didn't grow. So all we do was maintain or go backwards.
About tomorrow night, back tonight.
Okay, we can respond to any.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, anybody else? And we're gonna move on.
But I completely agree. The name is uncalled for. But we, you know, I would love it to make it called the Sparkle District, but you know, we don't get to choose that.
Government's all that, not us.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Thanks for your comments, guys. We're gonna start out with a public hearing. Regarding the adoption of the final proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty six. Anyone here wanna question us about the budget?
That's what next year. That's exciting.
First time that first time here, what is the budget? Do we have it? Do we have any numbers?
Um, yes.
Yeah.
Adam's getting them.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, well. Explain it to you.
Every January, we have two or three work sessions where we discuss all the line items. There are eighteen hundred line items in our budget. So what I have right now is more synopsis of where your property taxes are going. How do we care for other communities? But if you'd wanna go through, if you're a detailed person, I'd be more than happy to talk to you about the very small numbers, too.
What's a bottom line dollar? We're scheduled to spend. One year was fourteen million.
Yeah. So we'll just talk a little bit. I can answer that for you if you really want to, Roger, but I gotta go through my.
Go ahead.
Just to partly explain how how does the city or our community get funded? The biggest driver is property taxes. Other financial sources is listed as number two. That is like sewer rates, water rates. And then we've got intergovernmental. So that is usually road use taxes and then any type of grant or assistance we might get from our our regional planning association. And other taxes is a small amount, so that's it's classified differently. Little homes are classified as a different type of property tax, so that's where that would be under. Unfortunately, they're separated. Where as a whole, out of all the buckets and departments we have, where do we spend all of our money? Thirty percent is general government. That's police, fire, parks, library. A little bit of, yep, cemetery, a little bit of public works. The city office. Those are probably the main the main ones that that's where that goes. The light red is number two utilities. That sewer water storm sewer is about twenty-one percent of our money. Where do we spend specifically on public safety? So just to kind of define public safety a little bit more, it's police, fire, and it's our building inspections. Technically, that's classified as public safety. So couple other things, talk about public works. Usually what's involved in public works is street cleanup or it's maintaining the roads, stall. You name it. If you kind of add it all up, it becomes a pretty big, it's a pretty big chunk. And then the least that we spent the money spend the money on is community and economic development. So that's like Main Street or hometown days or there's a couple other like miscellaneous items that we don't use anymore. So but normally it is general fund that we spend the most in for capital projects or utilities. I'm gonna speak specifically about property taxes since that's our biggest bucket of money we get. So I'm kind of using this as a as a breaking point, but in April, our first meeting in April, we go over the maximum property tax levy. And so I guess what I'm trying to explain here is there are like four or five different public hearings that we have. Anytime you have questions, be more than happy.
So is this online anywhere? Is there a shoot? Because I am kind of one of those detailed people that I kind of like need to look at it close. And so is it on line or is it something? Just so I can take a look at it. I'm just curious.
I can send you it. I don't really put full Excel sheet online, but at least what on Heidi's end, we do have a budget that's available all the time, too. So sorry, I was speaking about internally, how I keep track of things, but.
She can go in and get something if she wants and fix something up.
Yeah, I just, you know, yeah, I would just like to see where it's at. The rock bottom dollar, the big the big ball of money is how much total. What is that's actually a different question is. What was the budget, the amount of money that you spend on all these little pieces of pie?
Twelve point six or four.
So the total expenditures for next year is gonna be twelve million, six hundred and seventy-one thousand twenty-nine dollars. Okay, question answered. Thank you.
Twelve and a half. Which is down from a few years ago. We had to build a sewer plant, so.
I am I'm aware of that.
Yes. That maintains water towers and we're all set up for all.
Okay. And if you want to, you're more than welcome to come in and sit down and and talk to me. Sometimes this form is kind of hard to leave, so we can go online and. Yeah, it's just very nice to just kind of see this. This is what this is, because I would like to know where my tax dollars are going. Yeah.
Good question. All right, anybody else here to address the budget? We're still in a public hearing, open session. So hearing no more, we'll. And move into another public hearing. On a proposal to enter into a general obligation corporate purpose loan agreement, this is for the Cedar Johnson Road. The loan we're gonna borrow proceeded Johnson Road. I opened that meeting, so anyone here want to speak on behalf of borrowing for Cedar Johnson Road and other public improvements. Hearing done, we'll move on. To item C, first reading of ordinance eight twenty-six. And then the chapter one oh five solid waste control. Give me a motion someone.
Move.
Changing some wording here. Just about the woodpile.
This is about a couple of different things. One is the woodpile. The brush pile has now been opened. Anyone hasn't heard that yet. We did open it last week.
We'll take those things on your property.
Yeah.
Pete, you take them out there.
There is signage. It is in a new spot, but you still go to the same entrance and just follow the signs. So we are updating the code to mention that that is now called the yard waste site. In addition, there are some new, there was never a section regarding the city yard waste site and the rules. They're now listed as a new section in the code as will be chapter one oh five point twelve. It talks about what we will accept, what we won't accept, who can use it, who can't use it. And if there's any, there are will be penalties for people who are disposing of items that are not yard waste. There will be a first offense, second offense, and third offense amounts added to that, and this will be the first reading of this ordinance. In addition, and also in that same section of this code is called the solid waste and control. It also mentions the waste storage containers for trash and recycling. Because we are moving into a new contract with the with the current vendor. It was suggested that we remove these specific sizes because those may not always be the case. And so it's better to keep it general, especially when the city is not supplying that service. We're actually contracting that out. So we're gonna remove that from the code so that we don't have to keep updating the code every time we decide to make a change.
That could be in a schedule.
It will be in the contract.
Things.
Yeah, and it'll also be in the in the contract.
All right, thank you for that. My pleasure.
So is any of the any of the wording for disposal? Do we have signing job there for that or is it just?
For the yard waste?
Yeah.
There's actually, I took a picture of a sign. I went out there this weekend. I didn't see it until I went out.
Pretty big sign.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a large sign and it says what the rules are. It doesn't have the first offense, but Matt was going to add additional signage for that. But there's arrows playing to it, and then you'll see a couple of different signs that says West Branch, you know, residence only, no contractors, you know, certain things. I will talk to Jessica tomorrow. We'll try to get something on the website. I didn't make sure the signs were up and it was ready and operational. We wouldn't use it this weekend and it was pretty.
So if a contractor cuts down a tree in West Branch, you can take anything out there.
They can take their woodchips out there. Anything under.
Eighteen inches.
Under eighteen inches.
That contractor can take those limbs out.
Well, actually, no, no contractors.
Yeah, why is that? Yeah.
No contractors.
Contractor.
Well, you know, you're probably charging the customer a tiff fee.
Yeah.
So I got a question probably for Kevin.
Okay.
Is there a limit on these offenses?
So I was thinking the same thing.
I think they all hurt a little worse.
So so by 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 law. I mean, that's what fraction can be up to seven hundred fifty dollars the first time and up to a thousand dollars each additional time. So there is a limit under state law.
We're close to that.
But I will tell you, in Corvina, we had a dump site that was not really monitored and we paid a hundred twenty thousand dollars a year because people were dumping everything in the summer. So it does cost a lot of money to pick out stuff that shouldn't be there. So I but the but what Leslie has here is basically what the state law allows. And you don't wanna go to seven fifty or anything the first time.
Right.
But but if you get to the point, if you have a minimal fraction, the other thing I can ask for, and the fine is also you can get an order from the judge that says you have to follow the rules or you can be in contempt of court, which is way worse than paying a fine. If you're content in theory, you can go to jail, but usually they could find you whatever the judge wants to at that point.
Done. I mean, because at the end of the day, I don't I don't know. I mean, for some contractor, two hundred and fifty dollars, it might be worth it to go out there and dump that stuff.
I agree.
Well, and that's one thing, too. I didn't realize the sign said no contractor, so I didn't put that in the code. I actually took a section of a code from another city. We borrowed theirs and we upgraded it. And also just let you know, we had the other city had a minimum fine of a hundred and fifty and Chief Hall suggested that we increase it, so that's why I increased it.
I normally have used the same, if I do minimal fractions, I always start at two fifty to to start with and then go up from there.
But we can add another no contractors here, and that would make it consistent with what the signage was. I just didn't know what the signage said, so I'll make a note of that if you would like to do that with the second reading.
And we all know how bad that race they got.
Yeah, there was.
There was everything.
Strangers dumping the stuff there. Okay, this is the first reading of this ordinance to mend a solid waste yard waste section. Any other comments or questions?
Well, if you have no contractor, that means that. Um, a tree service. They're a contractor, right? So they can't take anything out there.
No. Chips.
No.
Didn't we say they could take chips up there?
That would be what, what you would like, would you want contractors to do chips only or nothing at all? I thought Matt was maybe going to be here, because he, I had asked him initially, they were doing the new sewer plant.
And we would take chips.
To the new sewer plant and wood chips.
Yeah.
Um, and. At some point in time, we would need to build or whatever gets chipped in, maybe that's what we chip going forward and that's what we use, but do you know, getting the comments on that part?
Um, Matt had talked about that in the previous meeting, there's certainly quality of chips, he doesn't want to have a lot of yard waste in there, he wants to have the food. Um, so there may be some restricted is.
That Dave and then the type of chips that you run through like a Vermeer wood chipper, and and then the type of chips that you can put in a. Sub shredder, they're completely different, right? You more for the, you would more want your stuff to run through a shredder versus the chipper correct?
Looking for insulation value, that's why they're on there, so yeah, that's true.
Yeah, we really wouldn't even want chips.
I wouldn't think so, because I'm assuming a contractor, if a storm comes through and a contractor comes in and cleans up a mess, he's going to clean up a bunch of branches and leaves. And everything's going to go in there for chips, so. It's going to be a more of a combos pile than a chip pile, I would think.
Sound. Or chips in here now, because I don't see.
Well, one of my questions are, if the city hires a contractor to come in. Take down a city tree, or say he has to take down trees down at the, say the cemetery or something, are we allowing him in there, or are we? No contractor.
Oh, I think. Think we, we get the. I mean, if we don't get to use our own.
Well, I, I, I guess. Somebody sees a contractor pulling in and there's no contractor supposed to be in there.
We could include city, city contractors. Next time.
City contractors?
We could include.
City contractors would see permissions.
Okay.
Or contractors and city permission.
Okay, so.
I know that idea, I think one of the ideas was we were trying to eliminate. Cost of chip trunks and the big stuff, all the big stuff. But then again, if we don't allow big stuff in there, then we're not going to have chips for the sewer plant, so it's kind of a, that's one too here.
I'll talk in a video tomorrow and then come back with some suggestions before you do the next reading, I'll be able to do the final reading, which is in.
So we got two more readings after. But, so let's go ahead and vote on this tonight, then, go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Dean.
Yeah.
Stulman.
Yeah.
Horahan.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Alright, first reading of ordinance eight twenty seven. Many chapter one oh six solid waste. Collection of solid waste lotion. This pertains more to uh.
This is also tied into trash and recycling, the rates are in a different section of the code. Um, and it has the current prices of um, the trash and recycling, again, because the rates are going to be changing in a few years. The current contract you were just approved is going to keep the rates the same for two years, and then after that. So, to save the new clerk a headache and maybe missed this, I thought it'd be good just to take it again, take it out. These rates will be in the contract and they will be available to for public inspection as well as on the scheduled.
Which we adopt every year.
Yeah.
Okay, good idea. It's all the sense. Taken out of the ordinance, put it in a schedule.
So, not to muddy things up, but then should we do that with the water and the sewer rates too?
You can't. Water and sewer rates have to be in the ordinance by state law.
Even though we change those every year too?
I agree, yes.
Well, we have a schedule there also, and it has a two percent every, and then every five years we're gonna.
Yeah, we've gone to go on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're active, we're out there.
Okay, let's vote please, Leslie, on ordinance eight twenty seven.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Horahan.
Yes.
Dolman.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Alright, resolution twenty five dash forty two adopting the final budget. For fiscal year twenty twenty six, this is from June one twenty five to June. July one twenty five to June thirtieth twenty six. Motion please.
True.
Sure.
We've talked about this so many times. Go ahead.
Well, do you guys have any general questions first, before we?
Four point seven million dollars?
Yes, tha- that's for expense, that was not for revenue, of course, as you know, those are separated, um, just from a. Um, high level. Or police, um. There was a drop of a hun- about a hundred and one thousand dollars from. Twenty six to twenty five, but that's remember once again, this current fiscal year. We had police inflated, because we wanted to take into account. We didn't know if we're going to hire anybody, so we had um, the non burning contract that we included there. We had extra training or. You know, the new police officers, so even though it dropped, um, really the difference is, we, it is going to increase. Um, so in FY twenty four. Uh, the police department with four police officers, uh, was five hundred and thirty three thousand, five hundred and eighty. And FY twenty six is going to be a hundred and eight. Uh, thousand eight hundred and forty, but that is with increased wages and five police officers. Um, there is also a um. Increase for fire. Of fifty three thousand, a hundred and fifty dollars, and that is for inflation. Um, mainly and also too, because we are giving them a bump. For um. Per call as well. Uh, building inspection, there was an increase of six thousand, two hundred and three dollars. Um, and really that's just once again, um, inflation mostly. Um, Cherry Gert, who was our part-time employee, is now a contractor. So that is the biggest change for, for that department. Animal control is the same, it, it did not change. Um. Roads and bridges, which is a general fund, um, there was an increase of uh, twelve thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars. Once again, mostly inflation and. Um, wage increases that are going to happen in FY twenty six. Uh, street lighting, there was an increase of four thousand dollars, once again. Utilities have, will go up. And then there for garbage, uh, there, we, we did also. Uh, raise that about thirty six thousand dollars as well. Um, that's because of new residents, new service, and also too with inflation.
That's truly just asked where.
And that's a pass through account, correct?
Money in, money out.
Correct. Uh, library, there was uh, an increase of uh, about. Uh. Thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars or so, uh, just slight inflation and also wages going up. Um, parks.
Didn't we cut a person? But that would cut a whole person.
The increase is only like two percent. And that's to, to. Yeah, basically wages. Um. And if you have more questions, you can ask Jesse, but.
It's, it's mainly wages. It's like thirteen thousand dollars for the whole year. So much, it's, it's like. Less than one percent of an increase for them. Um, parks, um, there is also once again, a slight increase. Um. Mostly because of, of operational, um, there are some projects that Parks wants to do. So there's that, um. Increase, um, cemetery. There is an increase of about fifty one thousand dollars, and once again, I think that part of this budget is. Uh, we wanted to budget for those streets in cemetery to fix them, so that is. The big bump of about fifty one thousand dollars. Any other questions? A town hall, um, we decreased uh, about three thousand dollars. Um. We just didn't think that we'd um. Use as much. Um. And once again, town hall. But remember, this is just expenditures, some of the uh, expenses are. Covered then by the rental of town hall as well. Um, economic development, um, was an increase of fifty two thousand dollars. And that major increase is for that, um, University of Iowa. Uh, project that we're going to do.
That's a comprehensive plan.
That's.
And a lot of other things included in that.
So this year for the first year, we are budgeting for uh, TIF LMI, so remember. Part of the um, TIF, if we are going to um. Develop for a residential housing, we have to have LMI, and LMI then is used to um, do grants. Um, or to do any other thing, but we first have to have the process for that, but that we are uh, doing about thirty thousand dollars for this year. As of yet, I don't think we have a plan for it yet, but we do have thirty thousand dollars scheduled for that.
LMI for the audience is low to moderate income, we. We collect a little bit of money. From the developers. If they receive TIF money.
But.
It goes into LMI.
We didn't collect it from the developer, it's actually set aside from property taxes. Yeah. Um, bringing the boning, there was a decrease of six thousand dollars. Um, and that's mainly just to pay some of uh, reporting fees. Um, and maybe some um, engineering fees as well, depending on what it is. Um, our TIF rebate payments um, went up. Um, from a hundred and fifty four. Uh, thousand eight hundred eighty seven to a hundred and seventy seven seventy nine, and once again, that fluctuates as you know, because of. The incremental, um. Taxes that go up and down each year. Uh, mayor and council, uh, that was slightly down, um. And that's because la- last year we. Budgeted a little bit more, we gave it some cushion, um, and this year we just decreased that. Park at shredder, which is mainly uh, city office, uh, that went up, uh, forty thousand, six hundred ninety three. Uh, partly is because it's going to be an election year, um, also there's inflation as well in there, and also salary increases for FY twenty six. Um, legal services do the same, uh, that includes our city attorney and also recording fees. Um. Debt service, uh. Went, um. Actually down. Uh, went down about five hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars, and that's mainly because we're paying. As you may remember, two of our TIF, uh, twenty sixteen A and twenty sixteen B down this fiscal year. So that has created that, that decrease. And our um, capital projects. Um, increased um, by three point one million dollars. But as you know, we have two new capital projects. Um, so there's that increase. Um, water and sewer. Uh, water went up by seventy six thousand dollars. That is actually mainly all inflation. Um, as Matt would tell you if he was here, um, everything has gone up, gone up, like. Uh, chemicals, chemicals for our sewer plant, um, services. Um, so that we had to, utilities also, um, the new uh, sewer plant is using a lot more um, utility, so it, it, it was. It was an increase, so we had to do that. Um. Stormwater, uh, we decreased a little bit. Um, and then our uh, enterprise debt, which is. Any projects that are water sewers, so our sewer plant, um, that debt increased by about seventy two thousand dollars. And, I don't know that I have. That's a very high summary, but do you have any questions on the actual state budget form?
Alright, well, thank you. Um, any questions, anyone? You have a proposal to? Hold on, this final budget, so um, I guess we're ready to vote.
I just want to thank. Adam and you and all the department heads for working so hard on it. And putting together a nice budget, and I think this might have been the easiest budget I've ever been a part of. Um. This is your second one?
No, this is not my third one.
How you been there long?
Yes, I have.
Maybe that's why it went so well. Thank you very much.
Um. Let's go ahead and vote. Thank you.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Thorhan.
Yes.
Stulman.
No.
Alright, uh, moving on, resolution twenty five forty three adopting. Approving twenty eight E agreements between the city of West Branch and all the surrounding townships. Um. Board of trustees, that's Cass, Gower, Graham, Iowa, Scott, and Springfield townships. For the purposes of fire protection and aid and assistance in other emergencies or disasters. I'm gonna, um, thank you.
Second.
Let's go ahead and vote.
Councilperson Sexton.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dolman.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Horahan.
Yes.
Resolution twenty five dash forty four allowing a street closure and the consumption of alcohol on a public street. Within the city. On Saturday, June fourteenth, and this is the one hundred block of North Downey Street. From Urban Loops.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Randy, you got a problem with anything?
Not on this one, no.
Okay.
We're going to provide fencing and they'll set it up and tear it down. Hmm.
Is there any changes, Rogers, from what we've done like last year?
Don't think so.
Okay.
They need power, same power as before. Same as last year, pretty sure. Okay, let's vote. This is a street closure on June fourteen.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Yes.
Horahan.
Yeah.
Stulman.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Alright, resolution twenty five forty five, setting a time and place for a public hearing for the purpose of um, so seeing written and oral arguments, comments. Regarding the city's uh, proposed budget amendment for this current year. Um, this is just a public hearing date, which will be the next meeting.
Thanks.
First meeting in May.
May fifth.
Yeah. Motion please.
Second.
Let's go ahead and vote, Leslie.
Councilperson Sexton.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. Resolution twenty five forty six. In support of the application of BB Code. LLC for funding via the workforce housing tax credit program and pledging city monies for the same. Motion please. Move.
Second.
This is um, one four thousand tax credits, which is received. Three times so far.
As a reminder, for every credit the developer gets, we get half of that back with our development.
Yeah, he's paying us back. Somehow, we.
We just don't give them as much.
Yeah. It reduces. Yeah. Um, any other questions?
Was there a part of this that required destruction of the Miller property?
No.
No. Okay, this, this will not do that.
And there was something about a thousand per unit?
To, to uh, get the workforce housing tax credits, you have to either pay them a thousand dollars units or in-kind support for a thousand dollars.
How many units are there?
This one has.
Yeah, we already paid. Because when we did the original agreement, we helped pay to pay for the. The silos.
Yeah.
And so that, that met that criteria, so there's no more money.
We just have to put it in the resolution, because that has to be shown to the state, that's a part of the requirement of the cities to do that, so.
That payment's in the form of a TIF rebate.
So that's why it's in there, it says either cash or in-kind support. We, we, we're not pledging cash for that.
We're not pledging any cash at all, um, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
No, we already, we already did that three years ago. Um. So they just, they ask for it every year, but. Um, we met, we meet that.
We just have to show them when they ask, when they do the tax credit. After the project's done, you can access the tax credit, then we have to show that we give the in-kind support.
So there's no money out of our pocket at all?
Not that, nothing additional. Nothing additional that we haven't done with the development.
And the development payment was four point five million, I believe, right?
For TIF, but the part of it was we paid hundred fifty for the.
Silos.
One fifty. I don't, he he paid part of that.
Yeah, we paid one fifty, he paid one fifty.
Yeah.
And just add another five hundred thousand.
This is another five hundred thousand of. Up to five hundred thousand for phase four for the. Tax increment financing, less whatever he gives for the. For the credit here.
It's it's the final phase, the face.
We don't have any obligation for phase four. I mean, it was phase one, two and three.
We, there was, there was something in development here about phase four, if he did it. That's the five hundred thousand.
This is for phase four.
This is phase four, yeah. We didn't know at the time whether he's even gonna do phase four. We had the number in there when we did the development agreement, if he did it.
Which was part of the four hundred and fifty.
So we made the agreement, we didn't realize he was gonna do it or not.
Because there was still a question about whether he was gonna do it. Whether it included Mr. Miller's property or not. So we were not obligated to do phase four unless he. You know, we were obligated if he did it, but not. There wasn't a, he wasn't gonna get the money unless he did, unless he did phase four.
One thing I think we really should is to have some consistency, you know, I. Originally, you know, when we were doing the housing development, you know, homeless people and they built, that we paying so much money, but then all of a sudden we didn't have money to pay him. And now we're giving developers some money. And you know, the dentist office, I thought was significant because. We lost two dentist offices during that time, but we only gave the dentist office twenty five percent TIF. I think Heidi made a presentation here a couple of meetings ago, and she said that I'd hope it was poor, but she. Kind of said we should have a policy regardless of this stuff we forward. I'm a little nervous about this, this property tax stuff because the legislature is still in the process of doing their property tax. Amendments, that's gonna be, and there's also mention about TIF. Yeah, the legislature about TIF, and they said that's still. A little bit of a hot potato right now.
But he's not, he's under the agreements, he's only guaranteed the portion that we get. So if they, if the state reduces what we get. He only gets a percentage of what we get. So it's not like, it's not like we said, oh, you're gonna get X number of dollars. It's it's increment, it's the taxes, the tip. Taxes we receive, it's the percentage of, so if the developer, if the, for some reason, whatever the legislature does. They reduce, you know, we reduce fifty percent of whatever we got for the property. His rebate would reduce the same amount because it's based on what we get, not a, not a total amount of of taxes. We didn't guarantee him a X number of dollars to get paid back. It's a percentage of what we receive.
Lots of those agreements, Kevin, read both ways, and they was like.
Yeah.
Seventy percent for ten years old.
He uses not to receive the four and a half, like, like Little White was. When it was ten years, one fifty or if you, you know, it's a percentage, one fifty.
Most of them we have read both ways.
And KLM actually was supposed to be fifteen years, they're gonna be paid off in way less time than that, so. So, yeah.
Okay, so this is a resolution in support of the application for this funding. We'll provide a lot of support for the application. Any other questions? Go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Orhan.
No.
Stillman.
No.
Miller.
Yes.
Good. Resolution twenty five forty seven. Providing an agreement with Mark Land. For water and sanitary sewer improvements necessary for future development. Does everybody know what this is? Complete motion please.
So move.
Second, thank you.
So this is phase six of KLM's. Final phase. In order to. Effectuate any development across the road to the west, they needed to go a little deeper. With their sewer. Passing on the day with their sewer, so we agreed to. Set ourselves, otherwise, a future developer would have to tear up the street, the brand new street. And put in a new sewer line deeper, proper depth. We thought it was easier. Now and cheaper now. Then go ahead.
Our subdivision ordinances have language in there that if the city requires either a larger sewer or some other requirement on the developer, that wouldn't otherwise be necessary a part of their work. The city can require them to do that, and the city would cover the extra cost. So in this situation, we looked at the area to the west, and we looked at the sewer they put in, and I think there's a profile item in the. In the package, is that correct? Drawing there.
Yes.
So we can make that smaller. And during the review of their plans, I had asked council to take a look at this. The green line is what I had asked them to do, the line that's above that shows their sewers, what they originally planned as part of their development. As you can see, there's there's several feet deeper that they have to go for a few hundred feet. And they asked their contractor to give them a price for the difference between those two. That price quote is also in your packet, and you'll, you'll see that those numbers come from that quote for the additional depth. For the sewer as well as for the manholes. So that's passed on to council for consideration at the time that we reviewed the plat. We made the request that they do this, and that has already been put in, so this is just something that we're doing is a cleanup to make sure we have it documented. But that was the discussion at the time when we were looking at the plat, we'd like to do construction drawings. And that that was presented to council, and we made the decision. To have them put this in deeper, so we have the ability to gravity sewer further to the west. If that area ever gets annexed and developed.
It's about nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars.
So you're talking future development?
Yes, this allows us to.
So you're projecting that. Someday. We may go into Johnson Town.
Correct, yes.
So why is it? Why would we not do this under slum and blight then, if you want to do future? Development and stuff?
The funds for this will come from the Cedar Johnson Road project. Which is. In an urban renewal. Area, we did that years ago.
It's not under slum and blight. So you're saying urban renewal? But yet you're willing. To not say urban renewal on the east side of town and.
Excuse me, didn't we just spend two million dollars on upgrading the waters? On the east side?
Hey, Kevin, do you?
After how many years?
Didn't we just spend two?
How many years?
Didn't we just spend two million dollars on that side?
Have Kevin explain the. The different types of urban renewal areas, how they work.
So when there are two, there are two different renewal designations by the state. One is called slum and blight, one is called economic development area. So when we added Cedar Johnson Road. Four, five, six years ago, I think it was somewhere in that that range, was part of the economic development area. We added a bunch of roads, and I think the. The roads, if I remember correctly, about the same time, we added some of the right of ways on. East side of town, put the water mains in and some of the costs for that project. So that's why we did, we did that. There are some, there are some, you know, it can get technical here. There's some rules about. Cat, what type of, how long you eat the funding for the. Slum and blight versus economic development area are two different ways of this, two different lengths of time the city can keep the tax increment financing money to. Use that, use in the future on development projects in the, in the urban renewal area, so. We did this at the time, we put all the, I think we put all the roads in, I think that was the only thing we put in. It might have been that and Little Lights at the same time when we did that. So that was. That was economic development area for for those, and then. The slum and blight area would include. In the other area, what we're trying to do over on the east side. I'm gonna take the language out of it. What you're trying to do is you're trying to capture the value that is gonna be created behind the BP with that development. And we can use it on projects in that, in that area, and you can use, you can use urban renewal. When it's designated slum blight, that is, that has no end date. No, no sunset date, so we can capture the. We can capture the growth on the new development. And use that for projects in the urban renewal area. When you have to just add the streets, there's no growth to capture, so that's sort of the difference about why you, why you do one, one over the other. We. We have, obviously, the Heritage Hills, Slum and Blight, some of the. The rules over the, have changed over time, when, like on the south side of the interstate, those were kind of development areas, but at the time those were done. There was no sunset on either economic development or slum of light. Right now, they changed the rules, so economic development has a twenty year sunset versus slum and blight that has. No sunset, and also the economic development areas before nineteen ninety five, which are some of the ones on the south side, don't have a, don't have a sunset. So the problem is the state keeps changing the rules about. So what we're trying to do is trying to capture the, the growth on the, on the. East side for a longer period of time, so we can collect that money. And use it on projects in the urban regulatory at that time. But if you. You just add a street, there's no growth to be, no growth to be. To be accessed at that point.
That's a weird.
Yeah.
So for this particular resolution.
I've got a question, Dave. Obviously, at this point, it is what it is. But in the future, was there something we could have done to foresee, obviously, that when that water line was, was. Was designed that the odds were pretty good, we were going that other direction, and so during our developers' agreement. We could have set them to put it in at a certain depth from the get go.
Again, this gets into the language where we require the developer to incur additional costs to the benefit of the city for future growth. That's supposed to be compensated by the city.
But we do that all the time.
We have to put it in to the depths that are required by DNR, we have to go to the boundary of the development. But if we oversize it, or if we put it in a lot deeper, just want to incur extra cost, that's to be reversed by the city.
I did a motion on this. I did. Okay, so. We have a motion to approve its nineteen thousand eight hundred bucks. For this deeper excavation. Which will be paid for. From the. Cedar Johnson Road. Instruction funds, I believe that's what we're gonna use. Which is already. Been allocated. It's a, it's a lot less now than it ever would be in the future. Any other questions or comments?
So I guess another comment, since we were kind of, kind of bounced to that one meeting there. So is there a way that we could? I don't know, make a mental note of this or whatever, and so then maybe when the. Development goes on to the, to the west there, that we adjust the tap fee to maybe include this nineteen thousand dollars. You know, then that way, we're not really asking the road to pay for it, that. We can at least ask the future development to pay for it, because we save them a whole bunch of money by doing this and not making them either redo it or put. Put, put some kind of.
Can't call it an impact fee apparently, or some fees you can't call.
Yeah, we can't do anything when they're not annexed in the city, but we can when they annex in, we can have an agreement with them at that time.
Like that Pioneer Agreement or whatever that we were talking about with the roads, we could do something like that with the water.
Yeah.
Does that make sense what I'm saying, guys?
Yeah, so, yeah, we just can't. Assess them or do something when they're not in the city limits right now.
Right, well, there's not, there's nothing to hook on to right now.
Right, I mean, yeah, we wouldn't let them hook on until they annex anyway, so.
All right, let's go ahead and vote, please, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Stillman.
Yes.
Orhan.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Who's gonna keep track of that?
It's not, it's not as far off as you think it is.
Good question, though. All right, Resolution twenty five forty eight. Taking additional action on proposal to enter into a general obligation corporate purpose loan agreement bond. This is the actual. Four point. Loan agreement?
Yeah.
This is the final action. Someone give me a motion to approve. Twenty five forty. This is the actual. So seeing what you put this here?
Yes. This is a bound counsel action.
So make it all legal together.
Correct.
Do I get a motion?
So. So we have how much left over? One point, how many million?
One point two or three.
We're at around one to one point five, won't know until we get. Further into it, we're borrowing, yes, the ground. We're borrowing, we're projecting it to be three and a half million, and so. Bits came in at two point one, so yes, we will all bring back that discussion in terms of where those funds should go. Next, yes, the following meeting.
And you don't have to go up to that number, you can go above it, you can go below it.
This includes Main Street next year.
Yes.
Yes. So this is just not all Cedar Johnson, the. Grinding and overlaying of Main Street. Yeah, next year.
But where's that going? From where to where, Main Street?
Bridge to the roundabout.
Where?
The bridge.
What bridge?
In front of the Ford deal.
Okay.
To the roundabout, that's what we talked about.
We're not doing down here?
That's another, we like those bumps just the way they are. That's another day, it's another day. Okay, what have we got? We got a loan agreement here, we need to.
By the time those semis after interstate. Keep beating up. In the summer. That we're gonna have roofs so deep. That we're gonna be taking out people's oil pans.
Well, that's why we're putting it off until the interstate's finished. Before we do anything. Okay, any other questions on this bond? Loan agreement? Go ahead, Bill, Leslie.
Councilperson Sexton.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Stillman.
Yes.
Orhan.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Okay, and finally, Resolution twenty five forty nine. Providing a city clerk job description. An approval of such. In post the position. Anybody have anything they want to change on this?
I couldn't.
So move first.
Yeah, thank you. Seems like a lot of.
It is, it is.
Oh, yeah. I think that a pool of people that could actually walk through this project would be small. Other than us.
I don't have anything I would change, so. I don't want to make any suggestions. Hearing nothing, so let's just, you guys ready to vote? Go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Sexton.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Stillman.
Yes.
Orhan.
Yeah.
All right, let's talk about streetlights at Greenview. We got an estimate to do four. Or more, or. Yeah.
I can explain a little bit of this. When we, when this was brought up a few weeks ago, I got ahold of a liar. The liar started estimating. We kind of looked it over. We actually, we didn't even have to drive down the street. He brought me a map that showed every light. And. Showed me where all electricity is. Feeding these lights. When Greenview was put in, they put all electricity in the back of the lots. When Greenview was put in, they put all electricity in the back of the lots on the south side. And between the houses in the middle. So, initially, we were looking at six or seven lights possibly. To get some of those lights in, we would have to get easements from property owners to get electricity up to a new pole. So. I asked him if, um, since we're doing LED lights in all these poles. Why can't we just go off of a couple of the poles that are already there for power and just. Run, so that's, that's what we've done, um. The two lights that he figured would be. I'm gonna call it on the south, south fork, there's one light in the middle of that whole link. He would, he would go each way, about halfway between the light at. Greenview Court, there's one right there in that intersection. Um, he would go halfway between there and then halfway to the one that's.
They've been sold?
Yeah, I think that's about where it's at. And then, so he'd be going to the east with another one. Um, he's looking at foot one in Roger's yard.
We just.
Cause I want it there so bad.
Does Connie know?
Wasn't in Ra- Roger's yard, he just said, cause there's already a transformer there, it's easy, easy to hook up. Um, and then. I think he was looking at one.
It needs to be.
It needs light in front of my house, it's, it's dark. Um, cause there's already a pole in the middle of that section, so. Going kind of north and west, putting a light in there. All this can be, and the big, biggest cost of this was the boring cost. They hire a board or something and pour all the wire in, so that's the big cost, cause it's.
So it wouldn't have to be near a transformer unless the transformer is easy to get at.
Right.
That's in your twenty mile house.
Yeah. The, the other three was gonna go off an existing pole, full power from there, yeah.
So I have a question. Do they make, do they make solar ones?
The power company?
No, just solar.
Yeah, they're out there, they're pretty, they're uh.
Well, yeah, but if you're not paying sixteen thousand dollars for boring, you're just sinking a pole and putting a solar. Light on top of it, and then you're doing away with uh.
That might buy two, two lights maybe.
You're guessing, you don't.
When I, when I talked to one of the firms a year and a half ago, and we were researching this, I think it was like seven thousand. Um, the, my only caution, I think it's a super great idea, my only caution is. I don't want West Branch to be the test town if those lights, you know, are.
I, I get it, I'm, I'm trying to just look at a, a long term solution, because that group that came in here, I'm not sure they're gonna be okay with four lights. You know, and so, as you start going down the road of getting easements to finish the rest of this. Get. Get sticky.
And then, as Tom can attest, when he was on the council the last time this was brought up. And the reason why the lights weren't put in then was because they had to get easements from property owners to get power out to the pole, out to the street. So it wasn't cost effective then. I don't know what it would cost to get easements.
No, and by the way, Jerry, thank you for doing this much.
So I think we should do these four.
Yeah, I do too. I do too, but if we can get four in, and maybe, maybe we, maybe if it's only three or four of them we do, and we do the. Solar ones as test ones, and there are only three or four, if they don't work, then. You know, I, I'm not saying.
So, one, one thing I wanna bring up though, this is only a small part of what, what needs to be done in Greenview. The streets are maybe twenty feet wide, I mean, when you pass somebody out there. You're pretty much driving on, on the shoulder to make sure that you don't get.
Well, wouldn't they benefit from going to blight and slum and get grants and all the money for all this stuff? To. What you're trying to do on the east side? Isn't that exactly what you're wanting to do? Bring it out to family, urban renewal? And like I said, those houses are older than mine.
Yeah.
The infrastructure would certainly have.
Fix a lot of water lines up and. Okay, this is just a discussion right now, we, we looking for a decision, we, we need a resolution.
Yeah, we'll need one later, just direction, I just wanna see where you guys were at.
I think we need to do the four.
Uh, there's.
Song is common.
I, I'm, I would suggest we use some of the Cedar Johnson County road money. Because there's gonna be a lot of traffic going through there, and it needs to be done real quick.
Yeah, I did, I mean, I didn't discuss this with the um, the lion guy. As far as timeline, but, I mean, I can't imagine it's more than a few months out.
Okay, let's get a resolution next, for next meeting?
Yes.
Do you do the uh? The twenty eight thousand dollars? Seven thousand dollars a light.
Are solar lights typically brighter or dimmer, they go out quicker? I just, I would. You can get them in different. Scope sizes, even shades of, you know, light coloring, it's high, like. Um, very bright with the glue light, uh, very dim, like the nineteen twenties light, they're not quite. Designed yet for like the main street, they don't quite have that architectural stuff, but anything outside of that. Uh, yes, it needs size or scope, and there's bigger cities that have a main, it's. So, there's some around there, and I think Des Moines has them too, so.
Maybe we can talk to Moscow Lighting and Muscatine and get a deal, being we're in the same state. And not that far from.
If they have a program, then yes, that's a great idea, I guess I don't know.
Okay, let's move on. Thank you, Jerry. City administrator, Adam, anything for you?
I just wanna thank Parks and Rec Department, Aaron Laughlin, and the Parks and Rec Board, I heard. Nothing but positive things about the, the Ahaun this past weekend. Um, so, just wanna thank everybody for. Everybody who was involved in it, and then thanking staff for their, their work as well.
All right, nice job.
Just a couple of updates, Meadows Part Six, uh, they do have the majority of the utilities, the water sewer, storm sewer on Orange Street. They do have a little bit of sewer they need to put in along Cedar Johnson to serve those two zero lots. They're up on the northwest corner, that's yet to be done. Uh, they have a little bit of testing to do on the sewer, yeah, they did pressure test the water main, and that was fine. Uh, have some subdrain to put in yet, and a few things to take care of, uh. Before they can start working on getting it graded to pave, so, uh, moving along pretty good, um. I think, uh, the other, I know what I'll report on is uh, Cedar Johnson Road, been working with the contractor on some metal drawings, uh, that's the material they plan to put in that's. The project, um, storm sewer pipe, water main, uh, they've got quite a bit of uh. Material that they're going to have to bring in, um, one of the things that we've been talking with them a lot about is the phasing, they have submitted alternate phasing. And we received that this morning, looked over that, going to have a meeting with them to kind of talk through some of the challenges with what they're proposing. See if we can't get a lot of the access concerns addressed. Uh, if we're going to make any changes, I'll make sure that we bring that back and, and have that discussion with you folks, so that. Um, everybody is on the same page with what they wanna do. Uh, other than that, uh, I would suspect we'd be having a pre-construction meeting on Cedar Johnson in the next couple of weeks.
All right, thank you. Um, city staff, anyone?
Yeah, I just wanted to um, highlight how busy the library has been the last couple of weeks. Um, last week, we were able to partner with the Iowa Children's Museum to host a space station program up here. And almost forty people came to that, so that was really busy, and then right on the heels of that, we had the adult book discussion and. Almost a dozen people come to that too, so, um, busy night on Tuesday, and then the very next day was early release day. Um, we had indoor activities and outdoor activities, we did an egg relay for kids. Um, and that's always a big hit, there's usually at least forty kids here after school on Wednesdays. Um, and then that evening, we did a special science night that had a bunch of kids come too, so. Um, we've been doing a lot of activities up here, and they've been getting traction. Um, and when we're not hosting the activities, we do a lot of our normal help, uh, especially with technology and notary services lately. Um, just today, we had three people who came in for things to be notarized. We helped with printing and scanning of some like official documents and health documents for people. And um, when we're not doing that, we help somebody who's gonna be having surgery get set up to listen to audiobooks on their phone from home, so they don't have to come to the library. Um, so, we've got a lot going on here all the time, and it's been really busy the last few weeks.
All right, thank you, good job, Jess.
Thanks.
Uh, mayor and council, anyone, anything? Motion to adjourn.
Come on in.
We have another closed session meeting after this, so thank all ones.